Just some background on this. This is a meeting to get council direction on the county manager budget. This budget at this point is the county manager's. It is not the council's budget, but the county manager does work under the direction of the county councils. So our goal for this meeting is just to get direction. Some of it will be very broad direction, some of it could be very specific, but the purpose of this is just to get direction on the items that will be included or perhaps not included in the upcoming budget. This isn't necessarily a line budget for you.
So can I just say? So council, I think Angela and I have received input from a variety of you individually about how we want this to be carried out, at least in the initial budget formation based on the uncertainty that we all are facing right now. So I think Angela, to her credit, has accomplished that and she'll run through it and we'll have a conversation and get direction.
Yes. Currently, we have a proposed budget of $96,360,000. That represents a 4.37% increase over the current year budget. What is unique about this budget is we are funding county departments at basically the exact level they are funded at now. In terms of broad numbers, the Board of Education budget will go up just over $1.5 million to $43,624,000, and that will fund maintenance of effort. It does not fund any of their supplemental requests above maintenance of effort of almost $2 million. This budget...
I've got a question about that, though, since you're there. The maintenance of effort increases 1.1.
Yeah, the maintenance of effort increases $1.5 million. The proposed education supplement is $1.1 million because in the current year budget, we had $400,000 of nonrecurring costs. So our funding to the Board of Education, or to the public schools, is only increasing by $1.1 million, but their operating funds would increase by $1.5 million.
Right, but the $400,000 was in our nonrecurring last year, fiscal year '20. It did not get approved by the state. We did not pay it, correct?
Right. Nonrecurring is never paid to the Board of Education unless those items are approved.
So we have not approved those items right now. So that's why I'm questioning the difference between the 1.1 and the 1.5 because at $409,000, we need to discuss what we're doing with it this year.
We're doing nothing with it this year. Quite frankly, I believe under the law, we could have put an education supplement of $1.5 million. I think that is totally allowed under state law. I prefer to be more conservative and follow what I believe was the spirit of the law was that we wouldn't tax our, we wouldn't increase taxes to our taxpayers if those funds weren't directly transferred to the public school system. I believe the law, actually I know the law, says we can do that, but I don't believe that was the intent of the law. The intent of the law was to allow us to put an education supplement on our property tax rate for the increase. And even though the Board of Education didn't receive that $400,000, it was appropriated in our budget in that category in fiscal 2020. So I believe we should not increase the property tax.
Well, that's the whole, the property tax supplement is a different conversation. Right now, we have to figure out what is the mandated funding level to the Board of Education.
It is $1.5 million, and that is incorporated in this $96 million budget that's proposed. The other items included in that that are above current levels are debt service. Our charter requires us to fully fund our debt service. That is going up $600,000, and that is actually for the Easton Elementary School project. This budget does include capital outlay of $1.5 million. And what is unique about this budget is it includes a contingency fund of almost $2.4 million. For the past many years, our contingency fund in our budgets has been in the $600,000 range. I am proposing a significantly larger contingency fund, basically $1,789,000 above what we have in budgeting in contingency, and that is to allow the council flexibility of approving things in fiscal '21 as we know where our revenues are coming in. And those things are salary and personnel changes that we have submitted in the proposed budget, and supplemental requests where agencies have asked for, agencies and departments have asked for additional funding. Those were in various specific line items which the county manager has gone through and made recommendations. Not everything was funded, but we've taken those items and rather than put them in the budgets, we're putting them in contingency. Once we know what's going on during the year, we will have to come back to council to spend contingency funds, and council at that point can make a determination of the need for those funds to be spent by those agencies and departments and can approve or disapprove at that point, or defer until a later date if that's the comfort level. I think it's, I think it's really prudent to do it that way because it lets you do what you, what you want when we have a little more information.
So Ms. Lane's effort gives the council the greatest control over how that money is or is not used depending on where we move forward financially.
What is the, is all of, is that $2.4 million in contingency funding? Can it be allocated both to operating and capital costs, or would it be within operating costs?
This is also in operating. My recommendation, my recommendation for capital outlay is that those funds that are currently in this $96 million budget are not put in the individual departments, they're put in the county manager's budget or in his department. So again, it would have to come back to at least the county manager, and at that point, council, the county manager could work out some level of oversight of how much, you know, does every capital outlay request need to come back to council for specific approval? It could be based on dollars, but we can work out procedures for that. But again, it would, it removes the item from the departments to spend that money.
Which in the past has always been in the department budget as well as this current fiscal year.
And so again, it gives council more latitude and more oversight of how those funds are spent.
But if those funds are not to be transferred to capital, the capital decisions need to be made upfront. Those operating funds, operating decisions or operating fund decisions can be made as we see revenues.
Capital decisions could be made ongoing, too.
These can be, these can be reallocated to capital?
Yes.
Even, even...
Yeah, my expectation, if, if this is how the budget is crafted, is that all of the money we have allocated for, or recommending for capital outlay would go in the county manager's department, one line item in his department. During the year, as emergency services purchases equipment or information technology purchases equipment, there'll be an approval process that will happen, and once that's, once they purchase those items, we will charge those departments for those items, and then we'll do a budget modification in the fourth quarter to move the funds out of the county manager's budget to the departments where those funds are being spent.
Since we do have the public watching and listening probably for the first time, can you give a very brief description to them of the difference between capital outlay and capital because they're, they're not going to know the difference between the two?
Capital outlay generally are things.
Ambulances?
Yes. Computers?
Roads, equipment?
Yes, it's equipment, it's things. Whereas capital is bricks and mortar usually. Sometimes you could have a major, very major type of equipment rack into another project, but generally, you're buying a thing, a purchase. It's, it's not something that you build, whereas generally, capital, you build something.
Right. And so for the public's health, they, those are two separate budgets. The operating budget, the operating budget contains capital outlay things, and then we do a separate capital budget. A good example is the schools or a sheriff's department or something that we have to build.
Yes, and there could be equipment rolled into that, but you're still building something generally in the capital budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so my recommendation is that to give the council the most flexibility, as we, you know, we don't know what our revenues are going to be going forward. Two weeks ago, I had no concerns about our revenue projections, and that, we would surpass all of them easily. That has changed in the past few weeks, and that is one thing I do want to point out. I have reduced my revenue projections in this proposed budget for income tax and for, slightly for recreation tax. We just don't know where they're going to end up. And I thought my number was very conservative on income tax to begin with, but I have dropped it from my original projection by just over a million dollars. So I'm trying to be a little bit more conservative. I am projecting...
Let me, let me say this thing, I would say it's given this conversation, because they've been very conservative and very prudent approach as we went forward. Once I ran through email, my first concern, I think it was part of it, and I feel about by going through this approach, as you said before, give council some flexibility down the road by moving those funds over into contingency and then by moving the capital outlay or the county manager's budget, when, when the time is right, we can obviously go back and revisit those things that you pointed out for purchase. So I think this is very wise to prove where it goes. As you said, we just don't know what the income, income tax number is going to be as goes through the last of this fiscal year. We just don't know. So I think it's wise that we try to keep as flat as we possibly can as we, as we go into 2021.
And I just had a little bit of insight that the, at the state level, the Board of Revenue, which is the comptroller of the treasury and the secretary of budget and management, did their, up their projection at the beginning of March, which they always, right before they pass the budget, the state level, they, they might make a change. They didn't do that in March because they didn't know what to adjust it to. But Secretary Brinkley's comment at the end of that meeting was they're going to come back in May or early June and update that number. So as we see what they do, hopefully, they will do it in May, and I, and I did send a little email over saying, any guidance you can give us from what they see at the state level? You know, because if they downgrade their projection, you know, 20%, then we need to think about that as well. But, but the, the answer backed from them was yes, you do need to downgrade those numbers. We just don't know what number to use right now.
Can I take a fully extended?
So that is the proposed budget. Assuming council has no questions on any specific item or concerns about what is included or isn't included, I think we can move forward. The one thing I will say is that if this is the budget that ends up being introduced, there are going to be some items that are in supplemental requests and in salary requests, well, one being the surge unit for emergency medical services. They came in during this year, and we funded it on an emergency basis through the end of the year. I believe that will be a request that you will see July 1 coming in for your consideration. And I believe there'll be others that will come in July 1. So even though we're deferring it, I think in July, July 1, there'll be several requests.
I actually, I actually think those will be June conversations.
Well, I think they will be June conversations.
Yeah, right.
They will be coming in right away. But even in those cases, it does give the council the flexibility to say, yes, we want to fund it, but there's too much uncertainty. We can push it back till September, you know? So it does give you that flexibility, which I think is paramount at this point.
Well, and you know...
I would agree. I think having that, and you're absolutely right with Angela, that the surge unit which we're funding at, to the end of this fiscal year, we certainly take that conversation out with, with Mrs. Stack at the end of June going into July. Likewise, I think there was an information to do the Leighton Court study. Maybe we, we wait to have that conversation again in June and July and see what the, how the numbers look. But I think there's, there are certain things that we're just going to have to put a hold on, although there was a willingness just three weeks ago to do it. I think things have just changed in the last two and a half weeks.
Well, and it's funny, after being here for, for 10 years, and I remember there were times when, we're talking about the rainy day fund, and there were times when certain departments or entities said, "It's raining, it's raining." And it was like, "No, it's not." I mean, we have, we have restricted funds, we're not getting enough revenues, but it was not raining. I never thought that I would see the day, you know, during my time on the council where we might actually have to use rainy day funds. So by proposing a flat budget, I honestly don't think that we will get enough revenues to cover the flat budget. I think that we will have to dip into some form of savings, maybe not all the way into the rainy day fund because we did get a nice bump, one-time bump in the income tax revenues that we're kind of setting aside and pretending doesn't exist, but I think that it's quite likely that we end up having to use some of that one-time bump money to carry this budget that's flat. I mean, I, you know, looking at the projected numbers, I mean, I, I remember the, right, the year before I ran for council, and you drop from $31 million in income tax revenues to $19 million in one year. Let us hope it's not that bad, but it could very well be something like that.
Part of the challenge, and you're aware of it, is those income tax fluctuations aren't going to start right away. They're going to assume this amount to progress into your next fiscal year budget, so.
Right. And we have so many of our people who are retirees that are counting on the stock market, which is so volatile, which is why our income tax does tend to fluctuate a lot, too. A lot of our income tax revenues are not just from the person who goes to work nine to five, and of course, a lot of those people are now out of work as well.
Yeah, if, actually, since you brought this up in your packet, behind the sheet that says Option A, I have an analysis of the fund balance. So I will go through this. At the end of fiscal '19, we had a total fund balance of just over $30 million. It's one page, looks like this.
That's not balanced?
It's sort of in the middle of the pack.
Behind option A.
Behind, it's the next, next piece of paper, after that, after that next piece of paper. So pretty much towards the very bottom of the page in the bottom quarter, that's our fiscal '19 activity. At the end of fiscal '19, on June 30th, we had fund balance of just over $30 million. $13 million of that is in what we call our rainy day fund. $17 million is available for any, any expense the council wants to use at four. For fiscal '20, because we did have a big increase in our income tax, I'm expecting to not use any of the funds that we had budgeted from fund balance to cover this year's budget, plus I'm projecting an additional increase to fund balance of approximately $8 million. Now, that does assume income tax numbers come in for the rest of the year at projected levels. But that brings us down to having a projected fund balance at the end of fiscal '20 of $38 million. And then for fiscal '21, I'm projecting using $5 million. So we will be going into fiscal '22 with a projected fund balance of $33 million. $20 million is not in the rainy day fund, it's available for anything. And if you go up to the very top of the page, that is pretty much where we were in fiscal 2009 before the, the last major recession. And if you see during that time period, we used almost $20 million to get us through two fiscal years. So, you know, the good news is I think we are poised to weather whatever economic downturn. You know, certainly 2009 was a really severe, or 2010 might have been, economic downturn. Right now, you know, some economists are saying this won't be as long or as deep. I don't know, no one knows. But I think we already have as good a position as we can possibly be going into this period. I think we're very fortunate that we're in this position because not only do we have the $20 million, we still have our rainy day fund, but the raindrops are starting to fall, no question about it.
The $5 million that you're saying we're going to use, what is that being used on? I mean, that's, I, I thought we'd only be using that if we don't meet our revenue projections, so you have now...
That's what, that's in this 96, I'm using that to balance the $96 million budget that is currently being discussed for fiscal '21. So that's, that's balancing it. Now, obviously, a significant portion that's in contingency, and another significant portion is in capital outlay, both of which you all have major oversight in those two areas. So...
Does the $5 million, when we have, need to have discussion on what to do with, with or without an education supplement, is that $5 million assuming?
That $5 million assumes we have an education supplement.
Okay, so if we don't do that and we choose not to raise taxes on people in this year, we, that would, that number would be six?
Yes.
6.1.
Although I will say my recommendation is particularly this year, this is a year not to spend, I would say not to spend your reserves when we have a revenue stream available to us.
However, we're also still, we still have to have discussion about whether we're going to go ahead and put this on the ballot or not. So, you know, that's, and again, that's part of the discussion is we're trying, you know, we want people to understand that if we put another penny and a half or so on their property tax, it might make it even more difficult.
Right. And that's council direction.
So I think that's, that's more of a political discussion.
Right.
You in particular expressed, and Mr. Pack remembered, 2009, 2010, and just how bad it was and how deep we had the reach of the reserves. So that's why we're best recommending that you should consider not tapping in now and raising taxes for that supplement. But I understand the message that is sent at the ballot house.
Right.
I, I, I concur with that, and you're absolutely right, you know, '09, '10, was due to a crash in the housing market, as we all know. This is a, a health crisis, and businesses are being asked to basically sacrifice for the good of the, of the people, of everybody. They will come back, these businesses will come back. If you look on a lot of the major TV stations, Amazon is looking to hire over, I believe, 20,000 people. I thought somewhere else that another store is looking to hire some 10,000 people. So even in the midst of this health crisis that we're going through, there's, there's going to be pandering going on, and, and most departments are saying that when we get out of this crisis, that there will be a rebound. So unlike the housing market, which puts everybody into sweeping by surprise, this will be a very strong market, I think we'll rebound on it. And so can I ask you if you could go and just go around states, do it, and just walk us through the draft figures for discussions that you are discussing from up with, the revenue, and throughout the expenses, because we want a reputation in the high level of that. Can I just walk you through that for us, please?
Basically, the document that Mr. Pack is referring to is the budget overview where I've updated it for the proposed budget based on new, new concerns about possible revenue streams.
So that was titled Draft Figures?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Second page of your packet.
So I am projecting property tax revenues of $45,229,500. This does assume that the council will approve the property tax rate that I am proposing to include, and there is an increase in the property tax rate.
And that's the 1.9% of whatever is allowed under the cap?
Yes, so it's 2% this year.
2%.
All 2% this year.
And an education supplement?
Yes. Well, the next slide is the education supplement of $1.1 million. So that would be 1.4 or 5 cents increase in the property tax rate. Recreation tax?
And that's in addition, that's a new, that's a new supplement in addition to the, the, not, that's not simply carried over supplement?
No, the previous supplement is actually rolled into our current property tax rate, and then that's where, that's our starting number. So I'm proposing an increase from the rate we're at right now, which I have on another sheet, but I don't know off the, the top of my head. I'm proposing to increase the real property tax rate by .54 cents, just over half a penny for what we're allowing to our tax cap, and then an additional 1.45 cents for the education supplement to fund this $1.1 million.
Okay.
So it's 2 cents? It's 1.99, but it's 2, 2 cents?
Right, 2 cents. 2 cent increase over the current property tax rate. I am projecting income tax revenues, I'm proposing income tax revenues of $26.9 million, which is really just basically where I had at our 20 budget number. And as you all know, that number is coming in significantly higher, but I don't, you know, being conservative, I'm not increasing that really from one year to the next. Recreation tax, I've also decreased slightly. We are coming, right now, numbers are coming in above budgeted levels on both recreation and transfer tax. We really won't know how that will play out. We're in historic lows of interest rates, so mortgages are more affordable, but at the same time, people aren't shopping for houses, at least not in person. There may be online activity, but it's a wait-and-see game at this point. We just don't know, we don't know how it will happen. I do anticipate that early part of our fiscal year, those numbers will be low, whether they rebound in the second half of the fiscal year, we just don't know. No one has that information. And then pretty much the other numbers are in line with where we are currently. The other number that is increasing is using prior year funds, projecting to use just over a million dollars more than what we budgeted in the current year. And this is sort of the same, every year, we budget to use unspent funds, and we've been fortunate that we have not used any in many, many years.
I think that's about the check.
Yeah, we may, we may need this year to balance our budget. But again, if you look on the expense side, $2.3 million is in contingency and $1.5 million is in capital outlay. So that's almost $4 million that council will have significant oversight over how those funds are spent.
If at all.
The Board of Education, on the expense side, Board of Education budget, I am proposing to fund at the maintenance of effort level, which is an increase of $1.5 million from their current operating appropriation. The operating, right now, this budget proposes to have county operating at basically the exact same level it is at now. It's slightly less, I mean, but slightly. Debt service is increasing by over $600,000, and that is for the Easton Elementary School debt. And then we've already talked about capital outlay contingency, and transfers to the recreation and development impact funds are in line with current year. So I am proposing a $96.3 million budget for FY '21.
Are you going to bring the conference any forward?
Yeah, capital, capital outlay items for the Board of Education would be in which line?
They're actually in our capital projects fund, which is a little bit different, but we, they have to be outside of maintenance of effort. Well, if we put it in their operating fund, it, that involves a maintenance of effort, so that is something that we have to source, we put in our capital projects fund, so it doesn't end up in maintenance of effort.
So that's not in any of these lines at all?
So if you recall, if you recall, last year, a number of those items were in the nonrecurring costs, all of which were denied by the State Board of Education.
Where are they now, then?
They're actually in the capital projects fund.
In capital projects fund? How much is the Board of Education's capital projects request?
Um...
So about 500?
Almost $600,000. It's $565,000, I think, but we'll get to that in a few minutes. This is just their operating appropriation funded on that maintenance of effort. So that's the overview.
So just trying to do some quick math for people to follow along at home. So proposing to use just over $5 million from prior year, so basically using savings that we have. $2.3 million is contingency, $1.5 is capital outlay. We have the ability, if we stay with a flat budget, not to spend those at all.
Right.
So that's, leaves basically $1.25 million, I'm just going to call it, spending more than we have revenues, even with a flat budget. spending more than we have revenues, even with a flat budget. So the point I want to make is that even a flat budget is 1.25 million dollars more, and that's if our revenues come in at 2020 levels, and that's a crapshoot. Is that about right?
Yes.
And that doesn't include raising taxes by 2 cents on people and another over half a million dollars?
No, it doesn't include raising the...
The $5 million.
The $5 million as soon as we are going to add a 2 cent...
Right, so in other words, we're spending 1.25 million dollars more than our expected revenues, and the expected revenues includes a 2 cent...
Yes.
On the people, on tax increase, and there's still another over half a million dollars that the Board of Education is looking for, that we used to be, I mean, that we're going to have to fund as well. So, I mean...
Well, it's up for discussion how much of that you fund.
Right, I mean, it's just, you know, this is the kind of year where if we're not doing our own capital projects, you know, we just, I don't know how we can possibly approve capital projects right now, when we're going to be so strapped.
Right, I think capital projects needs to be a separate discussion
Yep.
The general fund budget. Yes, I guess we will move on. The one area I do need additional direction, assuming, we're assuming at this point this is how we're going forward, with capital, capital outlay. We, as in the past years, we have assumed we would do some purchases in the current fiscal year. I don't know if that is something we can really do. Number of these items, many of these items are computer-related, which I'm not sure if we can be able to even purchase them. So I am requesting that we'll...
In terms of whether there's enough time before the end of this?
Well, time then, stock, in many cases. With all the people who are working from home, a lot of computer items are backordered 12 weeks, and a lot of these come from China, who has, you know, is now coming out of their shutdown, but things are delayed, so...
But the other, again, I'm going to harp on this a lot. The other question is, even though it's technically, there's room in our 2020 budget to possibly purchase some of these things, since we may be coming short in revenues in 2021, is it the wisest choice? Again, I think we just have to discuss all these items, you know, whether or not we should be considering purchasing them all now. To me, it doesn't matter whether we purchased them in 2020 or 2021. Question is, are they things that we absolutely have to have, or can they wait? To make a decision in, you know, three to six months, just like we're going to be deciding what to do with contingency money and the supplemental things.
Right, so county manager, the county manager has gone through these and has prioritized. So I think that's, you know, I think there has already been a level of review and analysis as to whether these items are needed. I do have concerns that we will not be able to do the whole 300, 400,000 that we're proposing to do in the current fiscal year. I would like to actually increase our capital outlay number for next fiscal year by at least $200,000 from what I have, because I think there are going to be some items that in a normal year, we wouldn't have any trouble being able to purchase, and this is not a normal year.
So this line started this part of the conversation by asking for directions, so that's what, that's what we're looking to be for. If you look at at least some of these capital outlay proposed for this fiscal year, there's security related. If you're not comfortable, and I respect that, doing it this fiscal year by June 30th, or if we can't make it either in terms of stock or time, there are some that should be looked at for next fiscal year.
So look, I want to go back to the manual reports, I could, take you back to page five, and it's not in, so the plot is that, your recommendation of 2021 versus $390,000 or $400,000 in currency in current year. And then, that's got $0.4 million, that's like before 2024. Is that correct?
Right.
Yes.
Corey, I don't know where you are.
Page five of the Capital Outlay Packet. It's sort of on the top third.
Can you repeat that?
Page five?
Yeah, I've got, I've got the...
Yeah, if you look at the top third, page five of the Capital Outlay Packet, is the bold numbers there, the total general fund. We had total requests of $4 million for capital outlay. The county manager is approved, is proposing, has included $1.4 million in the current year budget, and proposed to spend $390,000 in the, no, sorry, $1.4 million is in the fiscal '21 budget. The $390,000 was proposed to be spent in the current fiscal '20 budget. I have concerns about whether we can actually obtain those items that had originally been identified in the timeframe we have to operate under to do those purchases in the fiscal '20 budget.
So you would like to move a portion of that over to fiscal '21? And what I'd emphasize to the council is none of that will be expended, but that one, I mean, back to you first.
Well, that's, that's the point, I was, that was the...
Let me, I mean, and how in terms of what you're proposing there, I mean, absolutely, if you can't find the items, I understand what you're saying, if you can't find the items, then that money just doesn't get spent in the 2020 budget. If we can't find the items, stretch the security items, if we can't finally make a purchase before June 30th, I say absolutely do that. If you can, if you can't, then we're just going with the 2021, do a monthly supplement and try to get a paid award.
We really can't do a budget supplement for this, which is why I'm asking to have it. The only way we can do a supplement to our budget is if it's an emergency item, and I don't know that any of these items would qualify as an emergency, or it would be a stretch.
So do we need to go through the list, then, and you can comment whether or not you think it's something we can get now, and the ones that we don't, we'll move those over?
Well, I think we assumed when we started this process that we would be able to do all of these items.
Though we did start that process, we started this process before the world changed.
Right.
So I think we need, we can go back, I think we need to go back on some of these to department heads and get some idea about, they need to do some footwork, legwork, to see if they can get them.
Yeah, so we think, yeah, I think what you're getting, is that's those data. If not, then what is it we're able to do, the budgeting?
We're supposed to introduce April 14th? April 14th.
April 14th? Okay.
Well, I mean, I understand the security ones, but I mean, just to use as an example, replacing carpet, maybe that's just something we don't do. It might not be a high-dollar item, but when you add up all those little things, they do, they do add up. So, you know, do...
We've already had that conversation around, but yes, absolutely, your...
So, and then my question is, do we need to go through these and make decisions on?
That's up to council.
I don't, I don't see how, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't see how we can go through and dig in the weeds on certain items when the world's changing as we speak.
But we do, I'm saying, do we replace a worn-out bench? Do we replace some carpet that's worn out that we can wait another year to do? That's what I'm saying.
I, so, so...
We normally go through them.
So, right, right now, you're asking for $390,000 left to, to, to fund some of the things in '20?
Right.
Right.
Normally, we would, we normally would take some of these smaller items, do them in the current fiscal year rather than deploy them until the next year. I'm not sure we'll be able to, I mean, carpet's a good example. I'm not sure if we can get a contractor in who can obtain the stock to do this in this current year. Whether it's carpet or computers, I think they're, you know, the whole supply chain is different right now than what it was two months ago.
But that, that's, Corey, that's...
Up to 390, what might, what, what would you propose to the council to do, up to the county manager's request for the re-reading?
I haven't really identified items. What I would like to do is put money into, additional money in the fiscal '21 budget to cover these items if we can't purchase them in fiscal '20. So again, the money would only be used if we can't get the items in, in the current year. You know, one, one item I'll point out is for the Department of Corrections, is the LiveScan machine, the fist, that's their fingerprinting machine. Initially, you know, he was sure he would get it. I'm not sure that's a possibility right now.
Yeah, we've got to get that, we've got to get that.
So we're going to need to go back and do some more investigating on those questions.
Yeah, yeah, what, 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 what can we put in the panel list, and then allow the county manager to explain some of the factors that the department did, and see what they can get, what they can get, and bring back the odd number next week?
I, I would agree with that, and so, I just want to make myself, my mind, so if you, if you put the whole 390, if you put the whole 390 in '21, that means you can't dip out of that until '21.
Right.
So we have basically 90 days, we have basically 90 days left to get through this.
We're on 90 days.
Huh?
If we put the full 390 in the fiscal '21 budget...
Right.
We wouldn't spend those associated with the County Manager's Department. If we couldn't get the item in fiscal '20, we wouldn't even ask for it in fiscal '21. My concern is, I don't know, I don't know the timing of the availability of items that in the past were fairly routine.
What about the availability of the money? If we...
The current year, we have the money, so...
Absolutely.
So, you know, so it's the same...
So it's already there.
Basically, it's the same pot of money. If we move this, if we move these into fiscal '21, our budget's going to increase, we're going to use fund balance to pay for it. If we spend it in this year, it's the same money.
But if you move it out, it decreases 20, 20.
Well, and then our fund balance would increase by that amount. Whatever, I mean, it's the same, it's going to end up being the same pot of money.
Right, it just trades places on July 1st.
Yeah.
Yes.
But, but again, we need to, you know, we might need to go back through, through these, I mean, the security-related ones, we get it, you know, those, if you can do them in '20, great, but there are maybe some piddly little things, we call them piddly little things, that we might not do. So I would ask that, as you're going through and asking the department heads, you know, things like a worn-out bench and carpet, and I would say, nope, we're not going to do those right now, even if, though we have the funds in '20, something like that.
We'll find a difference.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, let's, let's put a panel list with the...
Right.
And I've talked about my block, so, and what's the next, how do we move on to?
I guess the next item is the real property tax rate discussion, which is in your packet, because you just saw it right before you, when you pulled up the fund balance sheet. It's the sheet, the two sheets that are stapled right before the fund balance sheet. And it has option A at the top in various places. I actually only prepared one option. Well, because, you know, every year I would prepare a few options, and we've done the exact same option for years, so this option...
So it's done.
...the town differentials at the same level as the current year, and proposes an increase in the county property tax rate that's allowed under the cap of .54 cents. And that would generate $44.4 million in real property tax revenue. And I am putting in the education supplement here of a 1.45 cents that would generate basically $1.1 million. And this would increase property tax rates to our citizens by 1.99 cents, 2 cents. Your next page actually shows you the impact of that increase to the taxpayer based on the assessed valuation of their home. Someone with a $200,000 home, that 2 cent increase is $40 a year, just over $3 a month. I don't know if mortgage companies would even adjust for a $3 a month change, they may. Someone in a $300,000 home, the increase is $60 a year, $5 a month, basically. Or actually, exactly, I obviously have routing issues there. Someone in a $1.5 million home, their property tax rate would go up $100. So 2 cents will increase property taxes. I don't know that a 2 cent increase is insurmountable for most of our property owners.
Again, they're losing jobs left and right, and they're going to have trouble just paying their mortgage. So any increase is a big deal, and I don't think that we should gloss over that. Whether we do it or not is a discussion, but I do not...
This is the place where we need direct, we need direct direction from council on this. You know, if you don't want to increase the property tax rate, even what's allowed under our cap, that's your prerogative. And if you don't want to do the education supplement, absolutely. But at this point, then we will be increasing funds coming out of the savings account.
Right, and that, for me, I'm just going to, no, that's what I would do. This is the time when you try to keep the impact on citizens as low as possible. I will not vote for any tax increases at all this year. I am, since it's not, like, we're using 8, 9 million dollars like we did before, we'll have to figure that out. But because we had that large bump in the income tax revenues for this year, I am perfectly comfortable using about, what, a million and a half of it? Because we're going to gain, we're going to gain about a million and a half dollars from that 2 cents? Well, one, one and a half cents gets you to 1.1 million, so another...
Right, it'd be in that range.
400, yeah. So for me, I am perfectly comfortable using 1.5 million dollars of that 8 million dollar bump to smooth things over and not raise taxes on the citizens this year when they're going to have a hard time keeping their job, paying their mortgage, paying their bills.
It might be closer to 2 million, but it's in that range.
Between 1.5 and 2 million out of reserves, no tax increase.
That's, that's my proposal, at least at this time. And again, if, if all of a sudden, in two weeks, we come out of this and, you know, everybody goes back to work, but with 3.2 million people filing for unemployment last week, I, I'm not doing that to them, there's no way.
Yeah, I hear you, but, and I'm just trying to understand what you're talking about, but again, I think that this economy will rebound, as I said before, they are major companies that are hiring right now, right now.
Quiet, quiet, Amazon is hiring temporarily for a couple of months because nobody can go to the stores. Not all those jobs are going to stay, they are temporary jobs.
They, they are, they are hiring. I mean, I, I didn't go out and see what the actual job description was, but I do know that there are companies that are hiring.
Right, I mean, they said, Amazon and Walmart are specifically hiring temporary for a few months while we're dealing with this. They're not permanent jobs.
I'm not there personally, so just wait, let me get my, get my thoughts out here. So, you know, I understand what you're saying, I do. I think that, you know, if we could go with the supplement to cover the increase, it would probably be able to make its way to go and keep those reserves in hand in case we really need them down the road. Because everyone is protecting, we want to rebound from this, this will be a rebound. And the market will bounce back up, jobs will go back to work, and we'll go back to going out to run the work. I don't think that this assumption is going to be projected out two or three years. It is definitely a hardship right now, but people are going through no doubt of it, and you really have to take your hat off to, to the president and to Congress for their stimulus package, through the CARES Act, and giving some money back down to working individuals to help them through this difficult time. So I would not go into reserve to cover the increase at this time.
Mr. Pack, I share your concern.
I'm sorry?
I, 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 I share your concern about, about dipping into reserves that deeply.
But remember, we had an 8 million dollar bump. I mean, this is not actually using our reserves. We had $8 million additional in the current fiscal year. This doesn't touch our actual reserves. So what I'm saying is, we're not using any of that money, we're not even using the savings account, we got an 8 million dollar bump in this year.
And we're going to spend at least five of that under the current proposal.
But at, but at this point, at this point, I'm just saying, that, that bump was an anomaly, and we should not really look at that bump in, in true dollars. So I, I wouldn't even look at that bump as certain the calendar on down the road, because it's not going to be there, you know that.
Right, that's why I'm saying for this one year, we would use it just for this one year, and we still have a little bit of time... year, and we still have a little bit of time. You know, we don't actually have to, even though we're gonna maybe do, get through this budget process and not have as many meetings as we normally do, we still aren't going to adopt it before the end of May, so we still have two months to see if, you know, if things get worse, or if things start to get better.
I, I will say though, in terms of our property tax rate, you will probably, we have to get that rate to the state in advance of when we actually adopt our budget, so we don't have quite that big a window.
Though they also may extend those types of deadlines as well, I don't know what they're planning on that.
Well, then we won't get taxes out on time. I mean, that's, you know.
Might be the case.
Yeah, we, 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 we're not going to accept that not getting people's taxes out, that's just not fair.
I guess if I could get counsel, I mean, I guess I need a vote from counsel on what they want to do, maybe in terms of just, do you want to take the .54 cents that is allowed under our cap and then discuss the education supplement separately? Okay, so, do we release, um, I'm gonna ask for a poll of.
Yeah.
Do you want to do the .54 cents?
That's certainly different when you get out of the cap, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, so we're breaking the question apart.
So the point, all right, so the first, Mr. Pack is yes to increase the property tax rate by what's allowed under the cap, which is the point, the .54 cents.
So before, before we go with this, I, I want to make sure, so we're, if, if, if we're bumping it up, what, so we're, we're increasing taxes. So then what we're doing, and we're asking on the ballot to do it again.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Again, and that's another discussion that I think we should have.
I know, I'm just, I'm just getting it, I'm trying to simplify the people that are listening and watching.
Okay, so, um, so, um, Mr. Callahan, do you want to?
No.
Not get what we're allowed under the cap? Like the?
I'm not, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable raising it.
Okay, so you're no?
Yeah.
Um, I'm not totally for it, we're sorry. Um, Mrs. DiVillo?
Um, can I ask, have we put out the bond for the school?
No, it's in the process, we're hoping to sell in May. Um, obviously, right now, there isn't a market for municipal bonds, so that may end up being, that date may change. Right now, we're shooting to sell mid-May, but, um, you know, the bond market is, the municipal bond market isn't there right now, so that may have to be adjusted.
What does that mean for us?
Uh, it means we will just, you know, be paying bills without that money in our bank. Um, at some point, we will have to do something, whether it is we get a short term interim bond through a bank until the bond market recovers.
So in other words, we didn't get the mortgage for the school?
It's just we don't know this, I don't know if it will happen in the way we anticipate.
Right, it doesn't have to happen in May.
No.
We're fine.
Yeah, yeah, we have the cash to pay the bills for our share.
Why, 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 why would, why would we not, why would we not take out what is reached that we're allowed under the cap? I don't, I don't understand, it's a whole began to.
Because it's raising taxes on people in a very difficult time.
You know, you know, Corey, I, um, I, I understand, I, I'm, I'm looking at the situation that we're, we're in right now. Um, I'm, I'm feeling like there's a lot of, um, things in the air right now, a lot of things that are going, you know, this, this, this whole thing is going, not day to day, it's going hour to hour what's actually going on, and, and I just really feel like councils should take a couple steps back, okay? We're making decisions, and at the end of the day, Corey, we're, we're telling, we're, we're telling the residents that we're gonna raise taxes 2 perc, 2, 2, 2 cents, and I, and I, and I just don't think this is the right time to be telling them that, because we have so many things in front of us that we're gonna need to worry about in the next week or two. So I, I, I just would rather see you and us as a council just, just not do anything. Let, let's see how this thing's playing out. We have, we have the ability, we're gonna have the ability, Corey, we're gonna have the ability in the next several weeks to, to make some more decisions on things, and I mean, if it, if it's in the next two weeks we make this decision again, we're just talking about it right now. I'm just not comfortable raising taxes right this second, I, I'm just not. I might feel different in two weeks, I might feel different in, you know, a week, but I'm, I'm just not going to tell people we're raising taxes right now.
Okay, I, I, I certainly understand that, um, and you're buying it off to leave direction to move forward.
Right.
We, we, we have, we have to give that direction, we just can't wait our rounds of things to get better, uh, we still have a county to run, you're still, you're, you're allowed underneath the cap, uh, .54 acres, um, to run your, to run your government, to pay, to pay for people, and you're allowed an acre, uh, so it, it, it's just.
I hear you, I, I hear you loud and clear, I hear you loud and clear, but, you know, uh, you, you're, you're allowed to do a lot, we're allowed to do a lot of things, but now's not the time to be doing things like that.
I mean, we're allowed to take income tax up from 2.4% to 3.2%, and I certainly don't think that's on the table this year. You're right, there's a lot of things we're allowed to do.
Okay, um, I get back to the.
Back to me.
Back to the .54 cents.
So not, uh, so, and going back to, to the budget that, that's proposed to us, what, what do you have, what's the amount in there that you have? Is that, that's the 2 percent, or 2 cents?
It's the full amount, it's the .54 cents that we're allowed under the cap and the 1.1, and the 1.45 cents, that would be the education supplement. They're both in there, but, you know, I can, we can take them out and then the balancing would be reserves.
Yeah, I, I, that's the direction I would rather go.
So you're voting no to the .54 cents?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Mrs. Prices, no? Mr. Lusher?
Well, I, I, I think that we, I think it would be prudent to do at least the, the .54, we're talking about, we're talking about half a penny here, um, it's only what's allowed under, under the cap, it's, uh, what's getting hurt here is, is not, is not income, is, is not property, it's income. Um, you know, the, that, that base, the assessments are, are not going down here, um, and this will have compounding impacts over the years.
Right.
What, the decision that we make this year will impact the, the rate next year and every year, every year beyond, as long as the, uh, the present cap is, is in place.
Right, but you pay your property taxes with income.
I understand, I understand.
So you're gonna guess one?
I mean, yes, on, on the .54.
I have three no's.
Correct. So move on to the next one.
Okay, so the next one, I guess, is the education supplement of 1.45 cents. Um, Mr. Pack, do you want to add the education supplement?
Yeah.
That's okay. Um, Mr. Callahan?
Um, explain that to me.
Um, now, we're asking if you want to add the education supplement, which would increase the property tax rate by 1.45 cents.
No.
Mr. DiVillo?
No.
Prices, no. And Mr. Lusher?
Again, I share Mr. Pack's concern about, about the extent that we're, the implications of this on the reserve fund. Uh, I, I would prefer that we keep that in there, although if, if we have to choose between the two, it's the first really, it's that half cent that's, uh, has the compounding in, uh, effect over, in subsequent years.
Okay, well, um, we have three no's, so, um, basically, the budget that will be introduced will not have any increases, and we will fund, we will increase the use of reserves and balance the budget. So, thank you. How about I said it? That's easy.
So where were you on the last one? Were you a yes or a no?
Yes.
On the, on the education one?
Yes.
Um, so the next item, I, the next one, I have a general discussion of the material repurposing facility that's been proposed by, um, Warren Edwards, our road superintendent. Um, that would be a new enterprise fund, potentially. Um, there is a signif, fairly significant startup cost to that facility, um, I don't know if that's something the council even wants to consider pursuing at the start of the fiscal year. Um, I think, uh, that was on page 59, I believe, in your book, um.
It's not one of the end up today, then?
No, because you had it in your book.
Gotcha.
I didn't make those copies again. Um, you know, there's a significant amount of startup costs that's associated with that, again, we did fail borrowing a significant amount of money, um, and while there are some revenues projected in the current year, they're not significant, and we will be looking at at least a half a million dollars of expense above what the projected revenues are, assuming the borrow funds, so then we are looking at incurring debt for a very long, you know, for at least eight to 10 years, or at least eight years was my drivel, for this facility.
I don't think they were necessarily looking at, asking you about the merit of the proposal as much as whether this budget should include at this time.
So was there another way to do it by lease, we leased some equipment, and, um, would we be able to, and that would probably be more of a, a question for Mr. Edwards, be able to go forward with doing any or all of this by leasing it, which, you know, you wouldn't want to do that long-term, because eventually, buying the equipment makes more sense, but the question is, some of the things he's leased, he said it, wasn't, and there was a couple items that were in here that he wasn't proposing to purchase outright, that he was gonna do like a lease to purchase type thing.
Actually, the leasing ended up being a tad more expensive because of the, so much of that is front limited, um, rather than spreading out every eight years.
So, so, so my, my thought process was, several weeks ago, we gave Warren, um, the go-ahead on, um, setting up the operation sort of a, a, as a potential revenue gain, because we're getting ready to tear the school down, and we gave him the opportunity to go ahead and, and do that portion, and he went through a whole scenario that they're gonna buy the product back in time the dust clears, we were gonna make $90,000. That, that's what we all talked about. So my, my impression was that I'd feel more comfortable if that whole process is gonna work or not work, and are we gonna make 90,000, are we gonna make 10,000? So I don't feel, at this time, that comfortable, like, buying a half a million dollars worth of stuff to see if this is gonna work or not work. Look, I'm all for recycling and making this thing work.
Repurposing.
Repurposing, sorry, yeah, you're right. Repurposing things, but, you know, I, I think there's a little bit more homework in front of us to, to make sure this is gonna work, um, and, and we, you know, I, I've sort of went to my stretch limits a little bit with that, um, but I, I think if this all works, I, I think it's a great opportunity to, to figure out what worked and didn't work. I want more feedback from Warren when this is all over, if he, if he really feels like anything should change in this whole process, because it's gonna be a big deal what he's doing now. So I, I, and he, and, and it gives him more experience in understanding what's not working and working, so then that way, he might change his mind on, do we, you know, right now, all he's doing is getting, renting, um, a, a chipper, so to speak, and, and paying him $30,000 to get the material done. So, you, you know, is, is that, is that the right thing to do from here on out, or, or not, you know, so it gives him a little bit more education and experience on what he's getting ready to do.
Are you saying that lease equipment, do the project, but do it all under leasing and not purchase anything?
I'm, all, I, I'm just saying that I'm not sure the leasing, um, it's not leasing, it's renting and do, and grinding up the materials, it's not right.
Rent, leasing.
That's, that's all I'm saying, and I, I'm just saying.
So if you're looking for the, the chipper, I mean, that, that, the motor pool is gonna start coming down next week, uh, Kelly told me that the demolition of Moton will begin, uh, next week, um, I was gonna get Kevin to send us in an update on that, but I, I never got a chance to reach out to him. So, as you know, Warren is already under contract to receive that material.
Right.
So all of that, brick and stone and sidewalking, um, will start being moved up to the repurposing center. He's, that, he, he's gonna need that grinder in order to process that material and turn it into, um, recyclable or reusable or resellable, um, material. So it's gonna need more than just a chipper, um, to do that, it's gonna need the grinder. And if I'm looking at page, um, 59, um, the startup cost I'm looking at is, is $320,000?
Well, Corey, just, just, what, so he, he doesn't need to buy anything for what he's doing now, we, we've gave him, we, we've gave him the go-ahead to do this first round on renting all the equipment out, not buying anything.
Right, that was for the, based on.
That, that's my point, that's, right, that's, that's the direction, that's the point I'm trying to make.
He would rent the equipment necessary to process that material, and then, um, part of that would be sold, and if there was no market for the rest of it, he, um, had indicated that it could be used in County Road's projects.
To reduce his costs.
To reduce, and that would reduce his costs.
So we can.
It's not 59?
So what, so what's the, what's the start, what's the start, we're, we're looking at 3.20?
Um, let me get to page, to the right page, sorry.
Okay. Oh, shoot, I've got.
Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he has operating.
One, one, seven, what's this?
There was, are we looking at option one or two, version one or two?
Um, I think one was actually less expensive, or of all.
I think R.
Yeah. So the 320,000 is the startup cost, but that doesn't include the 1.7 million dollars of equipment. The 320,000 was to build the office area, um, that would also include bathrooms, that is a challenge, because they can't have regular bathrooms there, there's no septic or sewer in that area, um, so I guess we'd have to do some sort of a composting bathroom, um, I don't know much about that, that's way out of my league.
So the 320 is long-term debt?
Yeah, the, yeah, the 320 is long-term debt, and the 1.7 million dollars was to purchase the equipment.
Oh, outright.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right.
Well, wow, you know.
So if you go, if you go to page, um, 59.3, uh, is that, is that version, the lease version, if we leased the, the equipment?
Actually, that version is more expensive in the short term because of the lease payments. There are, it's a three-year lease, so it's actually more expensive to do version two.
That, that goes back to Callahan's point, it charges more money if we lease the equipment than it is to go ahead and purchase it.
Well, when you're talking about leasing, it's a shorter time period. If we were to purchase and fund it through debt service, I can extend that over multiple years.
Right.
My recommendation to council is that we not pursue this at this point, that we do let Mr. Edwards see how the whole process works with the Easton Elementary School, and then, and see if he is still receiving even the trees and other materials that he can recycle and process with using rentals, and then maybe look at this partway through the fiscal year and see if it makes sense to do it then.
I would agree.
So would that mean putting this into the contingency fund?
Does he have, does he have a grinder over there right now that he's running?
I.
No, I, no, I, he doesn't, he doesn't.
But he'll have it for when the school materials come in there, right?
Right, he'll, he'll do a rental for two weeks.
Correct, correct.
To process that material.
Right.
Or a month, however long it's.
Let me ask you this, that he, he's still gonna need the building, so when the trucks come in, they, uh, his, his workers have to have a building to check the trucks in as they're coming in, that front gate.
Now, he does, he doesn't need that, Corey, he's already, he's already, he's gonna be weighing that stuff.
At Vulcan.
At, at Vulcan.
Again?
He's gonna be weighing the trucks at Vulcan, so he's, he's went around.
No, no, right, he, he's, he's weighing. No, no, right, he, he's weighing, he's weighing them, he's weighing them at Vulcan, correct, to get the weight. But he, he's still going to have someone at the front desk to check them in when they come in, for the front gate.
They don't need a building.
Well, they will, they don't have a, they'll have a ticket.
Frankly, at Vulcan. But won't, but won't we still need, won't we still need somebody at that front gate when they come in? And, and I thought he was also going to have a, a hose there to wash those trucks off in case they had excess dirt on them.
Well, I, I mean, I, you're, you're going into the weeds a little bit. But when they pull in there into hi, into where they're going to dump everything, they're going to hand whoever a ticket. And it's just been weighed in, you know, he, he'll just have to deal with that truck because it's going to be many truckloads. I mean, they're, the, the trucks aren't just going to show up there with no tickets.
I mean, I don't think we need to build any kind of a building.
We, we don't have to build nothing.
We've got to get a porta potty and, and a little trailer or something like that for, for them to go inside. But we can't be putting three hundred and twenty thousand dollars into putting in a building and potties and all that right now.
All, all we're, all we're doing, Cory, is we're, we're, we're weighing the material. We're, we're, the, the trucks are taking it to the grinder, he's grinding it up, stockpiling it. They're going to grab it and bring it back on-site. That, that's all they're doing. And, and it, and in that, and in that, we're going to be making ninety thousand dollars. And that's really.
I've gone after the site several times, and my recollection from Warren was that he was going to need some type, some type of guard post there. If he's not going to need that, if things have changed over the week, then I'm, I'm mistaken. But I know in conversations with him, he told me that he was going to need some type of structure if people came in. And that it didn't have to be a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar structure, I agree with you. But he did say he was going to need some type of structure there.
Mr. Pack, I believe that is true if we are going to truly do the repurposing center. He does not need that to accept just the material from the Eastern Elementary School at this point.
Okay.
That's why my recommendation is that we at least defer this into the fiscal year. Let him have a pilot project with the Eastern Elementary School material. And then reevaluate maybe mid-year whether this is a new enterprise fund the county wants to set up.
Hi.
Will we, will we be setting any of dollars aside either in capital outlay or contingency for this?
All these expenses would have to, with the Eastern Elementary School, would have to run through the roads department. But as you, you know, he right now is projecting that he will generate a profit. So those would offset any expenses with the Eastern Elementary School material. And if he doesn't make a profit, then yes, we'll have to absorb the loss.
If he make, if he makes a profit, he can pay a quarter of his, his, his new equipment.
I agree.
Okay, so you're recommending us to basically allow us to proceed without any funding upfront?
We've given that, we've given that.
Yeah, you've already given him the approval to do the Eastern Elementary School. My recommendation is that, that's all we do at this point. And we reevaluate after that whole process is complete. And council, you know, mid-year considers whether you want to set up an enterprise fund. And at that point, you'll know, did that, even that's, that one function, did we generate a profit?
Right, that is a great test case.
Okay. Will, does he, does he, will he have the dollars, my last question, will he have the dollars to start the rental for the grinder?
Based on what he gave council earlier this year, the.
He's not going to need it, he's not going to make, he's not going to need it.
Right, what he will make by selling, because he's already committed to sell some of this material back to the contractor.
Right.
That will pay for the cost of processing the material at the site.
It's offset.
Correct.
We're good.
Correct. The offset cost, at, at, at the bottom line, he's bringing us ninety thousand dollars when everything's paid off.
Selling the material pays for the equipment rental.
Correct.
If, if we opt to set up this enterprise fund mid-fiscal year, what are the budgetary implications?
Well, an enterprise fund as opposed to fund itself, quite frankly, obviously in the year one, it may not.
Most likely not.
Most likely won't, so we could do, a gen, the general fund could load money to the enterprise fund. You know, we, we have done that with the airport. We have done less formal arrangements where we just cover their cash shortfall. And, you know, they pay interest to the general fund. But we could do, you know, more, we could do as formal a process as you would like. We have done with the airport, you know, an actual loan, you know, here's a loan agreement. And you'll pay this back. If the expect, you know, hopefully the expectation is they would have, it would be a cash, a timing issue on the cash. That initially, obviously, they'll have upfront costs. But within a year, the cash flow would be there to pay it back. So we maybe not need to do as formal a situation, I guess I would defer to office of law ultimately on that decision. But if it's a timing issue on cash, the general fund would just cover the cash and they would pay an interest charge to us once a year.
Thank you.
Right, and we don't have to do that this evening, but my, my, my suggestion would be that we do set this up as a formal enterprise fund, just like we do with the airport. And that our loans are recorded and paid back in a specified period of time.
Okay. Thank you. Well, yeah, do I have majority direction? I guess I don't.
I would propose, I think what Chuck and I talked about of just renting the equipment, getting through the Eastern Elementary School project because it pays for itself and then some. And we reevaluate this, you know, mid-year or next year.
Yeah.
I can support that.
I think it would look terrible or confusing to the community if we just went out and spent two million dollars on equipments to do this.
Right.
But I also think that in times like this, when you have cash and you have the projects coming up that you'll be able to reduce your future expenses on, this is a great opportunity to, to step in and save money down the road on future projects. I would also expect that Mr. Edwards will keep an eye on used equipment and auction items that are going up due to this, what's going on now. And this project may look very differently in the future, as enterprising as he is.
I think this project will happen at some point, but that's not yet. Well, it's actually happening right now, but just not by, everything right now.
Do we need to go into executive session?
Are you done?
I'm not done my whole list, but I didn't know if we were going into closed session.
For, for personnel? Is that where you are?
Are we not, are we not doing that now?
So I think there's a question, we have a dinner break in about twenty minutes. And then there was discussion about going into closed session to discuss public security related to the development and implementation of emergency plans.
Should we do that during dinner?
Yes.
Okay, so we're good to keep going?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, all right, the next item is the grants fund. So that pretty much wraps up general fund. So I'll rework some numbers and think that's pretty much put to bed. Grants fund is in your packet, you have the detail in your budget binders, the detailed requests. The first page, it's cable TV franchise fees. And this is a projection of what, well, it's a summary of what we have received historically for two years. And what I am projecting for the current year and for fiscal twenty-one, and even going into fiscal twenty-two.
Is this what you're on here?
Yes.
Okay.
At June thirtieth, we had a balance in the grants fund of available franchise fees of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We generally add around two hundred and thirty thousand dollars each year to that pot. So at the end of fiscal twenty, I'm projecting to have a balance of forty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars available for projects from, that we pay out of the franchise fee. So for fiscal twenty-one, I'm still projecting two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of revenue for franchise fees that we receive from Atlantic Broadband and Easton Utilities. So we have available balance going into fiscal twenty-one of just over seven hundred thousand dollars. Last year, we spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that we committed to various expenses. My recommendation is that we only budget to spend a hundred and ten thousand dollars of that money in fiscal twenty and twenty-one. Because we have a grant application pending with rural development for the extension of broadband. Easton Utilities is our partner in that. But we will have a match requirement if we receive that grant. And that annual requirement is just over three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars a year that we'll have to pay to Easton Utilities for six years. If we limit. Excuse me?
That, that's USDA, not rural development, right?
Well, USDA rural development. I believe it's rural development is the arm.
Yes, reconnect is USDA, rural development.
Yes. So my recommendation is that we scale back what we spend for this year and next year so that we can, if we do that, we should be able to fund the first two years fully of our match. And then obviously, we will still, you know, going into the year three of our match, hopefully by then, we may be receiving some additional revenues from Easton Utilities. Because as part of our agreement, they are going to provide us with some additional revenues for ca, for internet hookups. Whether that'll be enough to cover the whole year-three match, we don't know. Council will always know that there could be the need to have the general fund make up that difference. But I would least, my recommendation is that we spend a hundred and ten thousand dollars out of franchise fees for the next two years. And then we will have the match available for two years covered in full. But where this will impact is on community grant funding, obviously.
So what you.
So the next page is what I'm proposing to spend the money.
So MCTV gets the lion's share of this.
Absolutely.
And obviously, they cover us, and they're sitting over there filming us, making us all look good. And, and it is a little bit, is it fully, it's not quite fully funding the request?
It's not quite fully funding, it's funding them at their current fiscal twenty level. So it's not quite fully funding them, but it is keeping them at the twenty level.
Which I'm unsure.
Which is eighty-six thousand dollars. And then ten thousand dollars for Granicus. And we still, last year, we determined that any amount over ten thousand dollars would be picked up by the general fund. We will be picking up costs for that in the general fund. We're slightly above that right now for the current year, but it's, it's a minimal amount right now. So in fiscal twenty-one, I'm proposing to spend ninety-six thousand dollars between funding MCTV and funding the ten thousand dollars for Granicus, which is how we project our meetings in this room.
Right.
Along with MCTV, obviously. So that would leave fourteen thousand dollars available for community grants. We received requests of nine, just over ninety-eight thousand dollars. But this is the recommendation to fund fourteen thousand dollars of it to the various groups. Some groups that we have funded for a number of years, we're proposing to not fund this year. When this, when this started, the council had never intended this to be.
Correct.
Ongoing support year after year after year.
So I'm, I see a few that we have.
There are a few that we are still doing that are my, I think, nominal amounts for specific projects that are year after year.
Right, but they've come to rely on us as a revenue source, and I don't, and again, you just said it. This was not supposed to be a year-after-year revenue source for them. So I guess my first question is, can, do we need to go as high as we are on MCTV? And my second comment is, do we just cut it period for this year and not do grants? Because the broadband is so important. I mean, look at what we're dealing with right now. Everybody's having to work from home. Our children can't go back to school. We've got, I just, I would try to throw every dollar that we possibly have out of this fund at the rural broadband. And I understand that these organizations are nonprofits. But right now, you know, we don't know how long this is going to last. And any extra dollar that we can find, whether it's two thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars or, you know, a million dollars, whatever it is, I would put it all into the rural broadband for this year. Because I think we may have hit somewhat of a, a new normal with this.
So when you look at it out of mind, it looks like it has dropped substantially over the last few years. So we, we have a similar perspective in this price, we just didn't get it to the extreme of zero.
And I would not recommend reducing the funding to MCTV. They are our public information channel.
Right, and I, you know, I wasn't, I was.
And really, the, the, this, this funding is coming from the cables specifically to support.
That program.
And, and we're fortunate that, that the revenues that we get from the two cable companies operating here yield more income than is minimally required to operate major community television, which has allowed us to do this and not, and will now allow us moving forward to fund our share of, of the broadband project. So we are, in fact, funding broadband with this proposal, albeit, albeit with a very substantial cut to the, to the grant program.
So maybe we just stick with MCTV?
So I, I think where I come down is that I, I support the, the manager's recommendation on, on this, this full proposal.
I would agree.
I agree.
Yeah, let me, let me just say a couple, just a couple things. Year, year going by, council would always get these requests, kind of sit back and over and kind of decide where we wanted those funds to go into. I, I've seen that that has, has not been the case for this year, as it's already been done for upfront. And certain organizations have already been selected for funding. Generally, this was something that council did with consultation as far as what items we wanted to fund and what organizations we wanted to fund year to year. I, I would like for council to keep that, that kind of discretion to do that. I, I do understand that we don't have limited funds to work with. But I would still like to have council have some deliberation on which items they want to fund from year to year as the requests come in.
Okay, we can certainly do that. Do you want to go through line by line?
I, I, at this point, Angela, I, I do not. But I just wanted to be for the record that this was something that council always had sat down and went through and decided where they wanted those funds to go to. This was something that was not taken out of the council's purview to decide.
So Mr. Pack, we get the message loud and clear, it wasn't intentional, it was an effort to try to make this budget process easier. We're happy to have you all tell us where you want these dollars to go.
I understand.
There, there's nothing to say we can't revisit this, right?
Correct, I think our focus more is on the dollar amount.
Right, right, that's, that's what I'm saying. So, you know, do you feel more comfortable, Cory? Like, I mean, you know, let's get through the next month or so and, you know, that's what I'm saying. We, we can revisit if, if you feel strong about, you know, somebody on, on this list that we.
I, I, so I got, I, I think, I think Mr. Hall agrees loudly, I'm, I'm fine with what's been done this year.
Good, good, okay.
Except for the children's book festival, Mr. Price, Mr. Pack. That would be nice to fund.
With that?
Except for the book festival, that would be nice to fund, Mr. Pack.
Yeah, I'd certainly keep that in there, yeah.
So I guess do I have three that are okay with what's proposed?
Yes.
Good job.
With the dollar amount?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.